I'll order the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council, 6:00 PM Thursday, February 7th. We will start our meeting with a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance led by Councilperson George Azar. Michelle, please call the roll. Councilperson Allard.
President.
Councilperson Azar.
President.
Councilperson Crossen.
Present.
Councilperson DeBon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garth.
Present.
Councilperson Nassar.
Present.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
All are present. Thank you. First of all, I'd just like to welcome everybody, but particularly, I know we have a lot of students here tonight. I know we have a lot of students from North High School. I think we may have a few from Indiana State. And if I've missed any of our other wonderful institutions for education, I apologize, but we especially are happy to have young people and students coming to our meeting, and we hope that we will come again. Thank you. We have 30 minutes for the public to comment on items, or up to 30 minutes, for the public to comment on items that are not on our agenda. So there are agendas up here on the front pew up here, if you don't have one, and if you want to comment on something that isn't a matter of business tonight, you may comment now. We do ask that you limit your remarks to about three minutes, so if there are a number of people who want to comment, everyone gets an opportunity. And please state your name and your address.
Good evening, folks. As you all know, I'm Bob Murray, 540 Wagon Wheel, Terre Haute. At your last meeting, you had a young man up here before you complaining about the purchase of a Bearcat, the armored vehicle for the local police department. I respect his service and his opinion, but I spent a few years in the service myself. If you've ever been shot at, you want all the protection that you can get. And I don't want to read about any more of our local law enforcement people being killed or wounded in the line of duty. I know this is not on your plate, but just for future budgets, any protection that we can give to our law enforcement people within reason, please do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public?
My name is Joe Selikin. I've been resident of Terre Haute for many years, having come here to be a pathologist in about 1982, and segwayed into doing other things. But I've become very interested in recent years in the long-term treatment plan for the combined sewage overflow problem. Several years ago, I actually arranged for a very distinguished consultant, former chairman of environmental engineering at UCLA, former associate dean of the entire engineering school at Stanford, then stepped back to doing more scientific things, and was given the title of distinguished professor of environmental engineering, whose special interest is stormwater. And some years ago, he was to come and have a meeting with the mayor to confirm that my view of things, which is based on having had a year's worth of graduate education in environmental engineering, specifically with regard to water problems, before I went to medical school. And he confirmed my proposition that there was a much less expensive way to deal with this combined sewage overflow problem. But I got sort of, somebody decided to send me a letter that any further things that I was to say to the city, I had to have my attorney contact the city's attorney, because I was sort of assertive about my appointment having been canceled when I brought my professor out here. Well, I've come to find this past December that there's still an opportunity in relation to the authorization for $70 million of bonds passed last September to do Phase Two of the combined sewage overflow problem. I find as well, I've got to admit that I have a certain conflict of interest in that I own the 64 acres of property at 1331 South First Street that had been the shering plow and melon crop property and so forth. But I wound up buying that property because I saw its potential to save an enormous amount of money in solving the combined sewage overflow problem. The amount of money that could be saved would more than compensate me for the several million dollars that I have put into that property, and also save the city a bunch of million dollars as well. Dr. Stenstrom, I met with yesterday and got his schedule for when he's able to come out and do a consultation. It was judged that the $4,000 fee for this was something that the city would not want to pay. I am willing to pay again his consultation fee to come out and take a specific look at something that can save the city a minimum of $10 million, probably more like $20, on Phase Two only. And furthermore, we'll be able to get the problem of combined sewage overflow solved a lot faster, to be able to get on quickly with things that are in Phase Three of the program. So IDMS should certainly be happy to have the problem solved faster, and the citizens of Terre Haute should be happy to have it solved at much less expensive cost. The savings of $10 million amounts to over $100 for every citizen of Wigan County. And then reduce that to the number of taxpayers, it's a very significant savings. And that's only for the current phase, and the overall operating cost as well can be less by doing it the way that Professor Stenstrom supports my analysis of the situation. I know that the city can't order the administration to do anything in particular, but it's my understanding that the city council can pass a resolution which gives a recommendation to be not so much in a hurry to adopt any of the contracts that were recently proposed for $56 million or $60 million for the Phase Two only. I urge the city council to encourage the administration to give pause, to have Professor Stenstrom come out here. He is truly a distinguished professor, whose subspecialty interest is taking care of stormwater. He's consulted all over the country, and he is willing to come out here. Unfortunately, next week, he's going to be consulting in Korea, but he's given me a schedule of times that he would be available in February and March. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Donald Hyde. I live at 1411 Poplar Street. Well, you guys have scheduled several things I was going to talk about, so I'm going to thank God I'm an impromptu speaker, is all I got to say. I'm going to talk about something now that I think all you and I need to listen to, as well as the city council, anybody else that wants to listen. One of the things, I've lived here all my life. You can count on one hand the times I've lived for small periods of time, and I'm talking months, somewhere else. In other words, I've lived, walked the streets, rode the streets, drove the streets of Terre Haute for more than 63 years, and I'm only 64. I will soon be 65. I say that to show you that I've been here, and I've lived from childhood all the way and heard politicians, had all kinds of stories I could tell, but I don't. But I have noticed one thing, and especially in the last 25 years, it's gotten worse, not better. There's an old saying I was taught as a child, "Do not put the cart in front of the horse." The horse is supposed to pull the cart. You make it hard for the horse to pull the cart when you put the cart in front of the horse. The mayor, and I'm not just talking about the current mayor, I'm talking about all the past mayors, the city council, and I'm not just talking about you, I'm talking about all the past city councils, oh, and the county councils are the worst of all. They seem to not study, they want to look at stuff and put what they want out there and somehow convince everything that what they want is the right way to go, the price is right, it benefits, they say the community, but mainly it benefits them. They put the cart before the horse. Now let me just, let me tell you what I mean by that. I have no problem with the city having this center being built. I don't. I'm open-minded, but that's as far as it goes. Your job as a city councilman, the county councilman who wants to build a new jail, should do the same thing. I've got no problem with building a new jail. I'm embarrassed by the one we've got, not because of the condition it's in, but because of what it cannot do. So I've got no problem with that. But what should the city council and the county council do? You should inform the public that's what you're going to do, and then ask the public what would they like to see. Now you just had a half-hour presentation of the arts. Well, as an artist, I'm here to tell you, art is the number-one thing that creates anything. I don't care where you look in this city. I don't care if it's old or brand spanking new. Art created it. You cannot create anything without some degree of creativity, and that is art. All creation, pardon my French, all creativity starts with art. Now, can it be turned into other things? Oh, yeah. And we've got a whole city full of art. But in order to do that, to create art, you have to do a sketch. I don't care how good the artist is, I don't care what forming works, I don't care what style he uses, he does a sketch first, or she does a sketch first. Well, a sketch is no more or nothing less than you deciding what you want, and then in your sketch, you fine-tune it until you get a picture of what is in your mind that you want, no matter what it is. That is how you put the horse in front of the cart. You get out, you communicate with the public, this is what we'd like to see built in Terre Haute, I don't care what it is. Then you sell, then you sell the public that's what they want, but the way you do it also is you ask the public, what do you want? What do you think about it? How can we make it better? And then how can we build it? How can we build it a little cheaper but still get what we need and make sure it lasts? I'm getting a little tired of politicians in this county, state, and especially nation right now, constantly putting the cart in front of the horse. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other remarks, or, yes?
Hi, my name is Tammy Bowlin. I live at 2220 South 19th Street. I'll be really brief. I just wanted to come up here and thank you all for your support of the Vote Center at ISU, and we're really pleased the community came together and election board decided to maintain that Vote Center at ISU. I know as individual members, you were asked how you felt about that, and I just want to say thank you for supporting that effort.
Okay? Thank you.
My name is Glenn Eddy. I live at 3307 College Avenue, and as far as changing these one-way streets, I think that would be a problem, because like on, I used to live on 8th Street.
Excuse me, sir, that's going to come up later on our agenda, and that would be the time to comment on that.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's okay, no problem. Anybody else from the public who wants to comment? Okay, if not, we'll move on. Michelle, is there any general corrections?
There are none.
I don't think the mayor's present, but isn't any other communication from him in any form?
I did not receive any.
Okay. There's some reports from city officials. Every year for the audience, we make some appointments to boards and commissions, and one that we haven't done yet is the appointment to the Fire Merit Board, and so I would like to propose to my colleagues that we like to nominate David McCarty to the Fire Merit Board, and if anyone else has a nomination, we can also take that. If there are no other nominations, we'll need a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. McCarty, and a second.
Make a motion that we appoint David McCarty on the Fire Merit Board. Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilperson Allard and seconded by Councilperson Harrison that David McCarty's appointment to the Fire Merit Board be approved on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Thank you very much. Also want to announce that, and this is mostly for the public, because I think they remember that council knows this, the city council meeting, which we would normally have next Thursday, has been canceled. As it turns out, we don't have any business to consider that night, and while there might be some value to being here just to see you all and give you an opportunity to speak on non-agenda items, we thought for what it would cost with staff and everything else that it would be appropriate not to have that meeting. So we will not have that meeting, but feel free to contact any of us about any matter, and we will have our next meeting as regularly scheduled on March 7th, 2019, at 6:00 PM.
Councilwoman Crossen?
Yes.
I make the motion we cancel the meeting for February 14th.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Nassar and seconded by Councilperson Allard. The meeting for the February 14th be canceled. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Any other reports from city officials?
There are none.
Reports from Board of Public Works and Safety?
There are none.
Reports from standing committees?
I believe Councilperson Nation, did you want to give an update on that?
Sure, yeah, I can do that now. The committee that I chair that includes planning, we met earlier this week. We received input from a lot of different people about two-way traffic and after, about reverting one-way streets to two-way traffic, 8th Street, 9th Street, and Cherry Street. After, at the end of that meeting, it was determined that we'll take Cherry Street out of the mix. I'm willing to do that. That wasn't a recommendation of the committee, but it was, the committee made no recommendations, but it was something that became clear that needs to happen. We also determined that we would get the help of engineering, and then Jeremy Weir from West Central Indiana Economic Development District also stepped up to offer help with further studying 8th Street and 9th Street. And really, that's the punchline to this, is that when the weather breaks, they'll lay out some counters, gather some speed and other information counts, and bring that to the council so that we can further this discussion with some good data. After going back and forth with them about timeline and some of my fellow council members, we, what I propose is that we bring this back before the council on May the 9th. That's the second Tuesday, Thursday in May. And I'll just stop my report there. That may be more than you really want to add at this point in the day.
No, I appreciate that. It'll come up a little later on the agenda, and the gentleman who wanted to comment on that can do it at that time as well. But I do appreciate having the report on that committee. Are there any other standing committee reports?
I would add one other thing. In preparing for this meeting, there's a lot of work that goes into it on behalf of staff. People in engineering helped a lot, and Michelle helped a lot, as she always does. One of the most interesting things, I thought, that came out of that meeting was Michelle's comment that we had not had a formal committee meeting since 2014. Did I get that right, Michelle? Is that still correct?
I haven't had a chance to double-check that, but to find a sample agenda, I had to go back to 2014.
So my point in mentioning that is that President Crossen asked, or mentioned to me that she would like to see a more active committee structure. This is the first chapter of that, and I would charge or ask my fellow committee chairs within the council and all of my fellow council members to think about ways that we might use the committee structure to advance the work of the council in gathering information and helping inform both ourselves and the public. Karen Sess can be recognized.
I just wanted to follow up with that. I want the public to also be aware, we did have some people, local businesses, that came to that committee, that that committee meeting was available to the public, and anytime we have any committee meetings, that those are available for the public to attend as well. And I know we mentioned Michelle's hard work, but the engineering department's done a great job with the maps and so forth in the council that'll be coming up, so I wanted to commend them as well.
Anyone else? Thank you both. Yeah, it was actually a very good experience, I thought, and while we don't want to have meetings when they're not needed, I think there probably are some ways that we haven't thought about using them since they haven't been used for so long that we should, and I would kind of encourage all of my fellow council people to look at the current rules regarding these and those committees, because there are some restrictions there, but we might just start thinking about that a little more actively. Thank you. Any other reports from non-standing committees?
Not that I know of.
Okay. Items previously tabled.
Special unit 40, 2018, vacating a portion of 8th Street located between Cherry Street to the north and Wabash Avenue to the south. No problems were noted.
Is there a commissioner to speak on this matter? Can you just identify yourselves and your address?
Yes, David Patterson. I'm the executive director of the Terre Haute Commission Visitors Bureau, reside at 26 Park Lane. I'm appearing for you tonight to kind of give you an update, if you will, of how tourism has affected it in my 24th-year tenure at least, and so, and then ask that you consider vacating a portion of 8th Street. I've provided for you five documents tonight, the first of which, and I apologize to the crowd, I don't have enough copies for everyone, but this is all on terrehaute.com, and so if you can check that out at your leisure, that would be great. The first of which here, just are highlighted, are our largest attendee events, and if you go down through here and you look, we have a state association of community theaters, a state sanctioned USA gymnastics state championship. We have a five-weekend women's state bowling championships. Midwest soccer that pulls in, I believe their count is somewhere around 4,000 athletes. The 50th anniversary of Special Olympics is this summer, a wonderful event that ISU partners with, as well as the CVB. The USAC Dirt Nationals is at the new quarter midget facility. The dirt grans, usually those folks come in three or four days early. Again, a wonderful event, several thousand people there for approximately a week. Of course, Shy Diesel, Blues of the Crossroads. This does not include our 14-race schedule that will, our most aggressive schedule to date of the 21-year history of cross-country, which includes our 13th Division One NCA National Championship. Along with that, you have just a standard calendar event sheet that notes all of the events that our office is hosted with. To give you a brief history, the county adopted the innkeeper's tax in 1981 to rate at 2%. It remained at 2% from '81 to '95. I came in in 1995 as interim to see the farm progress show through and decided I would throw my hat in the ring, and so I'm beginning my 25th year. I'm proud to state that our collections have raised every year for those 24 years, and essentially, where we are here today, we've been an event-based market. I mean, that, what that means is, nobody comes to Terre Haute for no reason. We create, be it with sanctioning bodies through athletics, be it arts, and we certainly support Hilda and Mary and all the wonderful things they do, but we have to grow beyond an event-based market to continue to grow. The convention center, the proposed casino that was unanimous vote in the first sector yesterday, those are going to be things, and then, excuse me, I'm forgetting, Griffin Bike Park, it's open 365 days a year, seven days, you know, 24 hours a day. These are the things that are going to turn us from an event-based market to a destination. And so through all of these, be it banquets, award ceremonies, or just slicing up the room for things like the Burdines, when they had the Holiday Inn down south, they had a 450-seat room that could configure into four different spaces. We had a lady from the National Granite Wear Society for 24 straight years. I had to turn her away this year because we don't have the facility or community that can host that. And so those kinds of things, and there's a short list of events that we simply can't do because we don't have the facilities. Tourism's facility-bound, and so that's the reason we're asking you to vacate a portion of 8th Street, and yet the fact that you as an entity would contribute $10 million, the county would contribute $10 million, the CVB would contribute $5 million, you're then courting $25 million of private investment. So I think it's a wonderful deal for our community, the fact that we support so many different agencies around here and trying to bold their efforts. I would thank you for considering vacating a portion of 8th Street. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, David. I think we'll go ahead and get the rest of the testimony on the ordinance, but if you would stay so that it's been nearby, so if there are questions for you, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you very much, council.
Yes.
Madam President, members of the city council, Steve Baller, Nation's group, 7144 East Stetson Scott Sellers, I'm here on behalf of the Zigo County Capital Improvement Board and the petitioners, Kroger, Gardis, and Rieger, Terre Haute Hotel Partners, and Fontanet Holdings. We had a very spirited and long hearing last month. The request was tabled. Since that time, at the very strong suggestion of this council, we took the opportunity to count additional traffic on Saturday, the 19th of January, during the Indiana State Sycamore 1979 reunion game. Those counts were tabulated and analyzed by our traffic engineers. A follow-up memo, which basically verified and supplanted the information that was in our original traffic impact study, was submitted to the city and the city engineer, and Matt Brown from A&amp;F Engineering, who did that study, is here and would be available to answer any questions that the council might have in regard to that update, and the council were taken on that very special day. With that, Madam Chairman, Madam President, members of the council, I'd be glad to answer any questions. I don't, unless the council needs me to, to reiterate some of the comments that we made at last hearing. The vacation of 8th Street is critical to the construction of
The vacation of 8th Street is critical to the construction of the Terre Haute Convention Center. We are in the final stages of project construction document design. We expect our final documents in early March to go out to bid with Garment Construction, out to bid to their subcontractors. And we will be awarding those subcontracts very closely after that with the target construction sometime in, in late spring of this year. So it is obviously very important that, that this, this process conclude one way or the other, and I would be very happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I'm wondering if it might be instructive, before we had public comment, to have Mr. Brown say a few words about the traffic study?
Absolutely. Certainly.
Matt Brown, A&amp;F Engineering, 8365 Keystone Crossing, Indianapolis. As we were requested last time we were here, you'd ask that maybe we take a look at not just the AM and PM weekday peak hours, but maybe look at a special case where maybe some activity at the convention center would, would occur concurrently with something at the Holman Center. Somebody threw out there, I can't remember who it was, but that the 19th would be a good date. So, so we, we put everybody on board. Luckily, we had decent weather that day. It wasn't great, but it was decent. And we were able to put out our cameras again and collect all the traffic data from 8:00 in the morning to 8:00 in the evening at the six intersections we studied previously. What we found when we compared it specifically to the PM peak hour, because when we did the original study, the PM peak hour was the critical peak hour, was that the counts associated with the, the basketball game were, in most cases, four out of six, actually lower than the PM peak hour in the weekday. So we only had two cases where that was higher. One of them was at Wabash and Ninth, and it was 5% higher, it was about 50 cars higher, so one car and a minute higher, which was, that's insignificant. The, the more extreme case was at Cherry and Ninth, where we actually went from like 400 to 600, a little bit higher than that, but roughly. So we said, okay, well, what's that do? Let's, let's throw on the convention traffic, onto the network again, and just simulate what it would look like if we had the convention traffic with the Holman Center traffic. So we reran the analysis and what we found is we were able to obtain the same levels of service that were documented in the original traffic study, which was a level service B at that intersection. So overall, we're able to conclude that while the Holman Center does generate some traffic, the PM peak hour actually has a greater impact throughout the roadway system that we studied. And therefore, the event that would occur at the convention center concurrent with the PM peak hour is your worst-case scenario. And once again, if you remember, we were able to keep every intersection at A or B levels of service, which are the two highest levels for that condition. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I think we'll take some input from the public if they desire to, but if you'll stand by, we'll probably have some questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on Special Ordinance 40?
Donald Hyde, 1411 Papular Street, Terre Haute, lifetime citizen in Terre Haute. I have spent the last month thinking about it. I got to see the plans for the civic center or wherever you're going to build. They don't need to close a street to accomplish what they want to do. I'm an artist. I work in construction. It is possible to build that place in a number of different ways and not block that street in any way, shape, or form. With that said, I'm still open-minded about it being built. I want to make my main point here. Again, we're putting the cart before the horse. You're not thinking the whole picture. How many people in my lifetime, and I'm talking about from 1950 to 2020, now, mind you, we're not to 2020, but it doesn't matter, have been in car wrecks that damaged them? And again, I'm going to, I'm going to focus at downtown Terre Haute. How many minor accidents occurred? How many accidents have occurred with serious injuries? How many people have died from automobile accidents on Wabash Avenue, Ohio, on the downtown section? Here's why you keep forgetting the main thing you have to think about. When we built the new bridge, we changed the traffic pattern forever of downtown Terre Haute. It's not ever going to come back to it. Ohio Street became the way people came from Illinois or West Terre Haute into Terre Haute and on out. And they've got to get to at least Ninth Street more likely to go to 25th Street to cut over to get to Wabash Avenue, or cut over to get to Papular, or cut on over to go to I-70. Or they do it Third Street. Then to go across the bridge from Indiana, you're in Indiana and you're going down Highway 40, which I might add is still a major highway in the state of Indiana, and the very reason this city is called the Crossroads of America, because Third Street or 41 goes across Highway 40, which is the main road west. Well, you jogged it, you made, the bridge had to be replaced, so we jogged it over Cherry Street. And from Ninth and Cherry, cars turn and go straight. Now, the reason I point this out is that you, now, Ohio Street, we could play around with. We could play around with Ohio Street. But Cherry Street, that goes where ISU blocks the northern part of it, the city of Terre Haute blocks the southern part of it, there is one very small lane for all the cars through. It is impossible to turn that street into a two-way street. Can't be done. And I don't think the state will let you do it anyway.
Mr. Hyde, we're not actually talking about, no.
No, I know, I know, but here's the point.
We're not actually talking about the two-way streets. We're talking about the closing of 8th Street.
Let me finish. Now, explain why I'm saying this, please. What is the number one problem downtown Terre Haute has had for the last 40 years? It's the ability to go not east and west. That's taken care of. That's the easiest thing you can do in this city, east and west. It's north and south. In order to go to downtown stores, to go park at ISU, cross safely across different things, and go shopping, you have to go north and south. The reason I agree with turning, what, what, first of all, Ninth Street and Eighth Street used to be two ways. I thought that was the mistake to turn them to one way, and it's been proven right. You're willing to change it. Why? Because it's the north and south traffic you've got to get flowing. And more important than that, you got to make it so it flows, so nobody gets in a wreck. If you block A Street, you're going to force people to jog around to other streets that are already busy. And the number one streets, where they're going to jog. And they want to park or go across or park somewhere, anywhere in that area where that, where you're going to do this at, and I might add, this is going to be the street right by your convention center, right across the street from, from the Holman Center. You're going to force people to go down Seventh and Ninth, and they're already busy. And when you block the traffic at that intersection, you're going to double the traffic that has to go there. Plus, you're forcing all the people to go out of their way to find parking or get to the store they want. Well, guess what? I'm not much, but when I was a little child, I was a big guy salesman. I'd sell everything. And I guarantee you, the first rule of selling is to sell it where the people can get to your product. I don't care what it is you're selling. They got to be able to get there, and they got to get there safely and quickly. If you do anything to break that flow, it's not helping the whole public. This would affect every single citizen of the community, and not only now, but all the babies yet to be born. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public who would like to make a comment about Special Ordinance 40? If not, we'll turn to council discussion now. Counselperson Elliott?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. We approve Special Ordinance 40, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselperson Elliott, seconded by Counselperson Nassar, that we approve Special Ordinance 40, 2018. Roll call, Michelle.
Counselperson Aller?
Yes.
Counselperson Azar?
Yes.
Counselperson DeBon?
Yes.
Counselperson Elliott?
Yes.
Counselperson Garrison?
Yes.
Counselperson Morris?
Yes.
Counselperson Nassar?
Yes.
Counselperson Nation?
I'm excited about this convention center, but we're not being asked about the convention center. We're being asked to vacate one block of the downtown street. I think that's a bad idea, so I vote no.
Counselperson Crossen?
Yes.
That's eight yes, one no.
Then Special Ordinance 40 passes. Next item on the agenda, Michelle?
Appropriation 1, 2019, $41,366 from Edit Number 0404 to 0096 to Demolven Safe Buildings Number 432018 for $1,366 and a land acquisition redevelopment Number 441011 for $40,000.
We moved on there a little quickly, didn't we? I'm Dean Branson, with the Department of Redevelopment. I'd like to encourage people to use their microphone so, so people could hear what's being said. We've got two appropriation requests here to put money back into our edit budget. The biggest one here was $40,000 that we sold 20 building sites to the Housing Authority for construction of new homes that are presently being constructed. And we transferred another 10 sites to them that was outside the program that we did not receive any, any money for. But that's, the other amounts that are on here are a recovery of demolition costs that we've spent in the past. And I'd be glad to answer any questions about these.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on Appropriation 1, 2019? Counsel?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Ms. Nation?
Dean, thanks for your good work. If there's no further discussion, I move for approval of appropriate, oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I said we have to vote to vote.
Okay, I move that we take action on both appropriations, Appropriation Number One and Appropriation Number Two at this meeting.
So we moved and seconded that we take action on Appropriation One and Appropriation Two, 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same time? Most of the casters.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yeah, yes.
I move for approval of Appropriation Number One, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselperson Nation, seconded by Counselperson Nassar, that we approve Appropriation One and Appropriation Two.
Can you have, who said more? Just have a motion.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My mistake. Appropriation One, 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most of the casters.
Madam President?
Yes.
I, oh, okay, sorry.
Appropriation Two, 2019.
Now we're ready to consider Appropriation Two, 2019.
Appropriation Two, 2019, $1,731.50 from Edit Number 04040096 to Demolven Safe Buildings Number 432018.
Madam President?
Yes, Counselperson Nation.
Okay, I move for approval of Appropriation Number Two, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselperson Nation, seconded by Counselperson Aller, that we approve Appropriation Two, 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most of the casters. Next item of business.
General Ordinance One, 2019, amending City Code, Chapter Eight, Article One, Section Eight dash 21, specific one-way street designations, deleting Eighth Street from Holman Street to Maple Avenue and Ninth Street from Holman Street to Maple Avenue, and amending Cherry Street designation as one-way street to Harding Avenue to Third Street.
Counselperson Nation, would you like to just briefly, you've already stated this, but just state it again so the audience won't be so confused by our processing.
Yeah, thank you. We held a meeting earlier this week to consider this question, and as part of the meeting, it became clear that, for a variety of reasons, that Cherry Street should probably not be considered for two-way traffic at this time. And we did, however, decide to go ahead and gather more information on Eighth Street and Ninth Street. The people who are gathering that information, the good folks at West Central and City Engineering have asked for time to gather that, and I would, I realize that we need to vote to take action, et cetera, but I would propose that we move that next consideration of the question of two-way traffic on Eighth Street and Ninth Street to our second meeting in May, on May the ninth.
And I know that, thank you. And I know that we do have at least one person in the audience who would like to speak to this, and I sort of kind of lost earlier, so I want to give them the opportunity to do that if you'd still like to. Or anyone else for that matter, but if you would like to come forward. I believe it's Mr. Eddie, is that correct?
What I was saying is the speech is not really wide enough, I don't feel, for two-way traffic. Like I said, he's still on Southeast Street. And I think the money for the signs and all the work to be done can much well be taken care of and considered, for like more, for the police department, especially if we're getting its new casino and convention center and stuff. I think we're going to need a larger police department, Terre Haute Fire Department. And as far as these army vehicles and stuff, I'm, I'm in agreement. I think we should have more of them. We don't need to have more officers killed on one duty.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak on General Ordinance One?
Good evening. I'm Vicki Wagner. I'm the county councilperson from the third district, and the Eighth Street and Ninth Street are in my district, and I represent those folks. I have had a number of people express their concern about two-waying those streets, basically residents who are concerned about losing the parking on their streets. Most folks don't have garages, and they don't have any place to put their cars. And that off-street parking is a concern. They have children who walk to school, and they're concerned about two-way traffic. I dotted down a few of the things that they said, and parking. We have many children who walk to school. We don't have off-street parking. We hardly have any parking the way it is. We already park the car in our yard. Two-way street would make ambulance travel to Union Hospital difficult. This is on North Eighth Street. We have a lot of ambulance traffic. Losing a lane of parking would be a real hardship in our neighborhood. I did speak to the fire chief right after I heard about the two-way traffic, and he did say that the fire trucks absolutely would run quicker, do absolutely run quicker on one-way streets. On two-way streets, they wouldn't be able to arrive as quickly. Turns on, to two-way streets are slower and more dangerous to firefighters. So I, I just wanted to bring to you the concern of the folks that I did talk to and those, on those two streets. And granted, I've only talked to about a dozen residents, but they were concerned about changing those. And it does concern me about the, the children who walk to school. There are quite a few who walked to Bubachi School, so that was a concern to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public who'd like to speak on General Ordinance One?
I'll be quick. I was trying to point out one other thing that I didn't get to mention, and this lady already brought it up, but I'll pro with her. Don't take my word for it, for God's sakes, you nine people go out and look yourself at the streets. Go out and go up and down Eighth and Ninth Streets, both south and north, and notice one thing that will strike you.
that will strike you before anything else strikes you, is how narrow those streets are. They were built long ago. And by the way, at one time, they were two-way streets. The reason they were made one-way streets is for the fact that people, one, couldn't park, and, two, is how narrow the street is. Now, the point I was trying to make earlier, and I didn't make because I didn't have the time, was we could be the richest town in America, but we can't move buildings. In other words, we can't make our streets wider. I don't care what street it is. That's why Cherry has to stay one-way. We simply can't tear down all the buildings in the way of making it wider. Go down the streets, the city streets, how many of them could be expanded safely? And again, my main concern about this closing of 8th Street remains the same. You voted me down on one vote, fine, but I'm going to tell you right now, do your own research about the traffic in Terre Haute. Look up how many wrecks we've had in the city, not how many cars go by. That's insufficient evidence. The core thing of public safety is how many wrecks we have. And I believe you will be surprised if you truly do that. And making the streets one-way, I'm open. But at the same token, I'm also not opposed to them staying the way they are. You've got to convince us that what you want to do is right, and it will not cause people to get into wrecks. Public safety is my main concern, and I think you went against public safety tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on General Ordinance 1? Council? Councilperson Elliott?
Yeah, I'd like to be on the record that I drive those streets a lot, north side and south side. I yield.
Councilwoman President? I make a motion that we take action on General Ordinance 1, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Nasser, seconded by Councilperson Aller, that we take action tonight on General Ordinance 1, 2019. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I move to table General Ordinance 1 to May 9th.
Second. It's been moved by Councilperson Azar and seconded by Councilperson DeBon, that we table General Ordinance 1, 2019 until May 9th, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most of you pass it. Next item of business, please.
Special Ordinance 2, 2019, rezoning of property located at 1412, 1421, and 1425 First Avenue. No action can be taken. Area planning tabled the discussion until March.
In that case, is there anything we need to do about this, or?
No, no action.
We need not take any action? I didn't think so. Okay. Next item of business.
Special Ordinance 3, 2019, rezoning of property located at 201 and 207 North 13th Street. Area planning gave a favorable with conditions recommendation.
Yes, petitioner, please. State your name and your address, please.
Henry Ellis. And my living address, is that where you want? I'm from Bloomington, Indiana. I bought that property about a year ago, and it had currently been a beauty salon for about 40 years. And I've not had much success in re-leasing it as a beauty salon, but I've had a few people wanting to rent it as a car lot, so I wanted to repurpose it as a car lot and change the zoning, and possibly sometime in the future, repurpose it as even a better property to do something else with, maybe someday in the future.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to Special Ordinance 3, 2019? If you'd like to come up to the, no, come up, please come up and state your name and your address. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tess Brooke Stevens, and my address is 2004 North 13th Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. And I just wanted a point of clarity of the cross street of where the location is that he's talking about.
Yes, Mr. Ellis, if you wouldn't mind coming up. This is at the corner of Eagle and, what's the other cross street there?
It's Eagle and 13th Street.
Eagle and 13th Street. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public? Okay. Council?
Madam President? If there's no further questions, I move we take action on Special Ordinance 3.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Azar and seconded by Councilperson Aller, that we take action tonight on Special Ordinance 3, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most of you pass it.
If there are no further questions, I move that we approve Special Ordinance 3, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Azar and seconded by Councilperson Aller, that we take action tonight in the third, Special Ordinance 3, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Most of you pass it.
Thank you.
President Crossen, may I briefly address the council? I know this, I didn't want to say anything prior to a vote because, but I don't have an opportunity to address the council as a whole very often. One thing I would point your attention to is the staff report that was done in this case. If you look at the last page and the last paragraph, as constituents approach each of you in the future, I would very much impress on you that we push planned developments in these types of situations. The staff report recommended it, thought it would be more appropriate in this situation. It's been an ongoing concern with my office, Michelle's office, also the Area Planning Commission, in these types of situations, because what that allows for is that if the use stops being used for any particular reason, we'll revert back to whatever the original zoning classification was. And it's a very, very important tool, and I think it would help a lot of contentious situations where it's, a situation where a council may not be okay with a certain, particular rezoning. I'm not talking about this gentleman in particular, but I would urge you to push constituents that ask you about it to look into that, and I'm more than happy to discuss that with them in my office.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Terry Felling from the council?
I have one other issue to comment on before we adjourn.
Okay.
We're ready for that. I would like to be on the record encouraging conversation between Mr. Sullivan and the City Engineering Department and the board that governs the wastewater program to pursue his ideas. I yield.
Great follow-up on that.
Yes.
I hadn't really thought of it until Earl just mentioned it, that it's actually the sanitary board who is in the driver's seat on making those improvements. As the fiscal body for the city, we are involved in the bond issues, and we've already done that, but the actual contract letting and all of the other parts of making that project go are actually now handled through the Board of Sanitary Commissioners. And that's a fairly recent change in city law. It's different from when you were here or trying to affect the situation before. The sanitary commissioners have just kind of grown into that role, if you will, over the last two years. So I would just point that out, that procedurally, you'll be best served by taking this consultant to the sanitary board and trying to get their attention on it, not just, which is not to say that we're not interested as the fiscal body, but the entity that can actually do something at this point in the game is the sanitary board. I yield.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Any other business, Michelle?
Move to adjourn.
And move to adjourn, second?
Second.
Moved and seconded and adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most of you pass it.